So you get a good understanding. Yeah, according to these definitions I just said, it appears that the books you're advocating to the children, you're promoting their mantra of their religion to these precious little ones. It's the ones I'm talking about you said for during last month. Their religion is their religion to the precious little ones. Also, I saw on the West Library, you showed a book on your pride display of how to succeed in witchcraft. What in the world is that? How to succeed in witchcraft? You're kidding me? When does the library interject God of this world of any queer lifestyle? And all the line and all letters make up what they want these little kids to accept? Now, I, now, a really noticeable thing that extremely looks like you're really grooming children with, with, with these displays into early acceptance by putting these pure pervert books before them and show these little ones who are impression, impressional little children to be drawn into the wrong world. I've got grandchildren. And I got lots of cousins that are children. This should not ought to be, not in a library. It's too political. Such in your face, so as a political, are your posters of celebrating pride in the beginning of being queer. That's not all. So I have already a big question for you. What month have you picked out for honoring Jewish people, Catholics, Protestants in this library? Have you picked a month yet? If you have not picked a month, then I, then you need to put on your agenda ASAP. Had the same type of deal. Another thought. What is it that you offer little children? This is the part that really got me. You offer little children coloring pictures to come in to color pictures of gay pride and gay people, how they dress on their paper. What is that? For them to accept this stuff at early age? Another book called queer on your shelves. A graphic history book. I'm gonna close your ears. Of boys on boys, letting boys feel each other, boys of the same sex. What is that? If that ain't grooming, I don't know what is. I grew up with, were you kidding me? This stuff is on our library shelves, in the children's area, in your hallways? It's not ought to be. Okay. Okay, to me and a lot of others, this is straightforward R-rated X pornography pictures in the book. If I had the book, you'd be embarrassed. This should not be. This, this is classic indecent exposure of little children, little precious children. I call this child abuse. I want to say that again. I call this child abuse. Of the worst nature and the most egregious is that here's another part of this. My tax dollars are going for the promotion to ruin little kids' minds. Okay? Going and to be used to steal little children's mind with the filth and rottenness of this world like you see, it needs to be stopped now. It needs to be stopped now. This has been an X-rated sex shop to influence little precious children. They are not for sale. They are not for sale. Little precious children, they are not for sale for you to peddle with this filth. And the last sentence I have was just written, it was on the news when they're walking down a parade. We are here, we are queer, and we have come for your children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Kissel.
Thank you, members of the EVPL Board of Trustees. Quote, "We're here, we're queer, we're coming for your children," chanted marchers at the recent New York City Drag Queen Parade. And that is precisely what the specially curated 200-plus Pride books on display screamed to patrons in June across all eight EVPL libraries. "We're here, we're queer, we're coming for your children." On display were books targeting children with colorful covers. Books like "A Child's Introduction to Pride" and "Rainbow, A First Book of Pride" and "Gay and Lesbian History for Kids", all carefully propped up in the children's section of North Park Branch Library. "We're here, we're queer, we're coming for your children," was the EVPL message loud and clear. The most blatant was the 45 Pride book display smack dab in the middle of the children's wing of this central library arranged at eye level for little children with titles like "Twas the Night Before Pride", "Jacob's New Dress", "A Tale of Two Daddies", "The Rainbow Parade", "Pride Puppy", "Pride: The Story of Harvey Milk and the Rainbow Flag." No wonder that a grandmother told me she kept her grandkids away from EVPL programming this summer because of these gay grooming displays. Most shocking of the books on display for little kids at Central Library was "It's Perfectly Normal", a kind of sex manual used by the likes of Planned Parenthood. And I have provided for you a sample on the second page of some of the images from that book. Images that were apparently too risque for the Washington State Prism System, but I guess we're okay for here. Fortunately, a concerned citizen eventually checked it out to keep it away from little ones. Don't librarians have anything better to do than curate gay grooming displays? I dutifully filed a reconsideration form about the pride displays and the response did not deny they were grooming the children. It couldn't. Finally, I ask you, please, don't bury these books. Please, don't burn those books. Please safely store those books as evidence of the perverted and idiotic collection and display policies of the Evansville-Vanderburg Public Library. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kissel. As always, we do appreciate comments and feedback from our community. I appreciate you being here today. Thank you. All right. Correspondence, there's a folder with correspondence. There's probably, I don't know, I counted 18, 20 or so pieces in there for the board to look through. Next item of business is the consent agenda. Entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda as presented. There's a notion.
Second.
Are there any questions about the consent agenda?
I don't really have a question, but I do have a, I just wanted to point out and just ask. I did see that we're hiring a security manager, have hired a security manager and was just interested in the board meeting. I know Heather told me before the meeting started, but was gonna point this out at this point anyway, that we would be introduced to the security manager and how things are going. Sounds like it's great. We're all excited about that.
It's Abby's second day here, so we decided we give her a month before we brought her to the board. So.
I don't know. Two days seems like long enough.
But she will be at the next board meeting for you guys to meet.
Are we talking physical security, cybersecurity, all security?
Physical security.
Physical and safety. Anything else? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda is presented. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Governance. McCullough renovation bid for both. Think. Make sure I do this right. Is it this? I just need to read this into the minutes. So from our consultants that we have on, on retainer, MKM Architecture and Design bid openings led, and this is their recommendation. So I'll just read this for the record. On June 29th, 2023, 2:00 PM, Evansville-Vanderburg Public Library received three competitive bids for the scope of work defined within the EVPL McCullough renovation bid package. The lowest base bid received was provided by Danco Construction Inc. and included all costs, fees, prices, and permits as defined by the June 1, 2023 construction documents and addenda for a total of $2,565,000.00. The contractor's anticipated schedule assumes a start date of August 1, 2023 with a construction duration of 210 days. The provided bid does not include a construction contingency. And per the bidding documents, the library will hold this separately to fund any unforeseen conditions during construction. Additionally, none of the provided bids include the soft costs, including furniture, fixtures, and equipment, or FFE, which shall be supplied separately by the library outside of this contract by work performed through subsequent bid packages. MKM has reviewed these bids and recommendations that due to, due to their completeness, the library proceed with awarding the general scope bid package to Danco Inc. without taking any of the alternates. This bid is recognized as the lowest and most qualified. The complete bid tab has been enclosed herein for your reference and review. Sincerely, Sac Benadet. So the Building and Grounds Committee reviewed this with the consultant, went through it, asked lots of questions. And on behalf of the Building and Grounds, we all recommended to move forward in the same procedure, in the same vein. With that, I open the floor. Or well, let's entertain a motion to approve the, so move recommendation. Here's a motion and a second on the floor. Discussion. Who were the other bidders? The other bidders were Garmon and Dybrow. That caught my eye too.
Is there any, what happens if they don't get done 210 days ago, to 240, 270, is there a penalty?
So, yes, when we talk with it as part of the construction or the statement of work in the bidding process, they do have a an assessed penalty once they hit the date predetermined. I'm not sure what it was. It's, it's probably not a sizable amount, but enough to make a difference and get their attention.
I believe it's a hundred dollars a day, 500 a day. Yeah.
Was any damage to the 500? I mean, it's, like I said, it's enough to get your attention.
Get your attention.
Other questions?
I don't have questions. I do have a couple of things I wanted to point out. One of the things that stood out to me is how much the administration and Building and Grounds team wanted to work to make sure that services continued in a great way for McCullough patrons. And Lori and Lamont and everyone's work on getting set up to move those services over to Washington Square and getting that lease in place. I know in the director's report, that's one of the things that Lori's office has been working hard on. That's just been fantastic in that concern for making sure that there's little to no disruption of services to patrons of current McCullough is a great thing, I think. I appreciate that.
Other questions and comments?
I'll make a point that all three bidders were good bidders. All fully qualified. I'm not supposed to call them different companies, different ways, but clearly Danco did his best.
And I concur. I, I dealt and worked with all three of these companies in one form or fashion and other menus, and all three are highly qualified and capable. But in this case, Danco gave us by far and the best bid to include all of our alternates, which is good to see as well. Other comments? Otherwise, I'll off the, are the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
There's one negative. The motion carries.
Did you confirm that Sabrina was a nay versus an aye?
Sabrina, did you vote yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you, Lori.
She just thought of delay.
So we are gonna mark you down for a yes as well, so therefore the, it is proved unanimously. Motion carrier.
Okay.
Thank you. Nice to see you stream too, by the way.
Hello.
All right, next item of business. Finest report. Lauren.
In your packet is the month, June month end appropriations report, and I'm just going to, for informational purposes, tell you the balances and because we'll be discussing it in more detail under the second quarter midpoint of the year update in a moment. The balance of our appropriations of our operating fund for the end of June was $8,996,139.46 or approximately 59% of the original budget. It's just slightly higher than if we were expending it on an evenly monthly at 50%.
Do you want me to hold questions till the next part?
Sure.
Carry on.
The investments and balances for June 30th, 2023 in our state investment pool of trust Indiana for all four funds was $16,942,100. And I'll point out that the library operating fund did receive or removed and invested $5,900, which was the residual balance of our tax settlement that we received in June. So that's why that balance is a little bit higher. And then the average daily yield for June was 5.1084% or up six tenths of a percent since May. And the average daily yield year to date is 4.7406 or up eight tenths of percentage since May.
Good numbers.
Very good.
Next, we have the approval of June. Sabrina, are you gonna handle that remotely?
It's Bob now.
Eric, what? That's what happens when you're out last from a meeting.
Yes, I would like to move that we approve the following general bills in the total of $2,648,327.77 for the period included, including July 13th, 2023. In addition, we had three payrolls in June being about $263,645.15, $267,382.56, and $420,181.81 because we had a three payments in one single month. That was last month higher because of various bookkeeping reasons. But I'd like to have a motion, I do make a motion to approve all of that both perpetually.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. All right. Next item. Second quarter operating budget update. Lauren.
So I put together a line by line, instead of a category, more of a category which you receive monthly, I put together the line by line, including the revenue that we've received through the end of June 2023. And I'll start off by the, talking about the revenue a little bit. You can see that we have received our tax settlement in June. Broken down into the categories of types of tax that we've received. You might note that in lieu of taxes shows zero this year so far, and I did question that because we've always received a very small amount of in lieu of taxes, and that's everything outside the scope of what the other major categories are, but there were none for this particular settlement. So that's why it shows zero. The estimated, or I'm sorry, the anticipated revenue on the far right column will show that the circuit breaker tax credit that we talked about last month has been applied to the budget order. So instead of $11,790,000, we're anticipating with the circuit breakers, $9,412,518. And so at this point, we have 53% of the budget left to collect in December for the property taxes. And then just going down through some of the other revenue items. We budget for miscellaneous revenues, and those are the ones that are asterisked. And for those, we are already, we have already exceeded well over 50%. So we are looking at 47% over what was anticipated for the year or what we budgeted. So those particular numbers are going well. And the other one is the interest from investments. So as I just mentioned, every month, the interest rate keeps going up, which is fantastic for us. And we budgeted $10,000, not knowing what the market was going to do and based on the past couple of years' performance. And we've already exceeded that by 1,400% for the year of 2023. The other note I might make is on local income tax for the month of June, it shows $730,000. That includes 404,000 of supplemental local income tax that's distributed once a year. Otherwise, we're continuing to get that 112 payment from the state for that. Under expenditures, not much to report. I will note that in August, once we have the final numbers of what the salary increases, the effect they've had on those particular line items, I will be moving particular line item surpluses that we use to come up with that $500,000 that we mentioned back in May. I'll be bringing that to the board for approval, so we can put that into the salary line. And you can appropriately then see how we're spending in salaries for the rest of the year, so it doesn't show as a negative. And the items that are in red percentage points are just ones that we're keeping a very close eye on, that we've already expended more than 50%, and that is unusual or that we need to make sure that as the year goes on, we're not expending more in those particular categories or the ones that are in a turquoise color are just a little bit below the 50%, and again, we'll be keeping our eye on those. Do you have specific questions about any of the line items?
We got enough money to keep Steve coming to board meetings, don't we?
Yeah, that's one of the ones we're keeping our eye. I, I will note that it's, it's been a little, we need to, actually, as we're allocating our budget for 2024, and that will come the first reading next month. We need to take a little closer look because it's been several years since we'd had any bonding issues. And while we can get reimbursed from the bond proceeds for the services that Steve provides for us, that doesn't go back into the actual operating budget. It just goes into our pot of money. So in that case, we need to make sure that we're in the future as we're talking bonding. Yeah, we budget accordingly.
I figured it was bonding.
Any other questions, Lori? So just for me, the eye level question is, you know, based on the theoretically 59% at 50% in a year. Anything in there make you nervous?
No.
Because to me, it looks like very, we're on target in most places.
Actually, we're a little, we're probably more on target this year than we have been in other years. And there's some things that we used to pay on a monthly basis that we're now paying annually in the spring, so that has come off the top early.
Those gears forward.
So.
Any other questions? I don't, do we need a motion to approve that?
No.
All right. Next item. 2024 Eclipse.
So this is just information. At this point, we wanted to get you this document sooner rather than later. We will come back in the August meeting with the recommendation from us based on these options. But we wanted to have the information to you so you can book it over in the next month, and then we can discuss it in August.
Real quick, and Rick, you've asked this too, but just have, have we gotten any feedback from our local public safety?
Everything that you are reading is based on the information. So our staff sit on the team of people that are working on this throughout the community. Visit Evansville is kind of spearheading the entire effort and are working with both local law enforcement agencies, the city and county governments, other businesses, and everybody's kind of in that same group.
There's nobody from schools there, is there? That was one of the reasons I was asking. No. Yes, very much. That's one of the, I mean, and when you look at this information, some of the other, you know, additional past library examples, some of those folks chose to stay open because their school is closed. To my knowledge, the folks that I reached out to in our communication department and others, we have only been contacted by the museum and not by Visit Evansville or anyone else. We've reached out to Vanderburg County Sheriff's Office and EPD. But I do think that this is something. My question kind of was, who were the officials that anticipate an influx from 80,000 to 150,000 visitors?
Get that detail, that evidence, but I know that's coming from these meetings like that, but they're basing all of their, yeah.
So I, I would expect that probably at our next board meeting, we'll probably have a litany of questions
Yep.
and probably won't be in a position to make a decision.
Okay.
I, I think we have time on our side at this point in time, you know, to make decisions whether or not we would close or shut down for a period of time or make other other suggestions or other arrangements on that day. Just having experienced, my organization has locations in the impacted area last time, and, and we did make some adjustments because of it.
Yeah, yeah, great. Well, that was, that was why it's, it's, I mean, quite frankly, you're getting this information. We don't have our recommendation together yet. We're still in talks about what we want to do. But we wanted you to have that so that we could have a robust conversation with questions and discussions so that we can come to the best solution.
This is great information. One question, one question that just occurred to me is, so in an example where, you know, you close all locations, what would that look like for employees? Would you treat it like an inclement weather day?
Probably.
Yeah.
Or, yeah.
So folks would not lose pay for that.
Yeah, but that's something to be discussed.
But that's something to be discussed with the board and board.
Because it doesn't have to be that way.
Yep.
It just depends. And everybody could, you know, flex their schedule, do something different, use it as a PB day if you wanted to be paid for it. There's a lot of different ways that we could go. I do want to be clear. I did not put this together. I bring it to your attention. But Kelly McDaniel, who is the programming librarian, and Katie Reinike, the outreach manager, have sat, they go to these meetings, they put this together. I just want to commend their efforts because it was their hard work to put this document together. For us, we ask questions, we put some more into it, they adjusted it, and then I just bring it to you, so.
I agree. It's, it's good to have this, this far in advance so we can start contemplating possible plans.
And this information may not be available, but it's something I certainly would be interested in. If we have any decisions from other entities, because I do think there is a domino effect, such as the example of the school closure and what that does. Just thinking about, you know, daycares, other entities that may or may not be closed. I think that would be really helpful to know whatever information they have available.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Or to a recommendation? Next item is MCO grant project.
Like the welcome back Charles Sutton, who is now back to.
It's very nice to meet all of you. My name is Charles Sutton. The acting assistant professor at the university, in the, in the Indiana University Indianapolis now. No, thank you for this opportunity to, and I bet I probably stay on script here because I'm gonna go over time. Thank you for this opportunity to share the work that we've done. And when I say we've, I mean, EVPL has done in partnership with IU Indianapolis or IUPUI, the MCO project, which, you know, that's, that's what we partnered with them on, the MCO project, which is a model for public libraries' use of data. So our task was to understand sort of, or just explore data and program. So the local promise zone designation provided an opportunity for to look at ways that the public library and EVPL, public library broadly and EVPL might understand what I call local knowledge. So data, information. understand what I call local knowledge, so data information used to talk about and address complex local global issues. So if you know anything about the promise zone designation, that's six areas and they're doing a lot of stuff, and so I kind of looked at what that constituted locally, how that sort of changed and created space and place and also affected identities. So local knowledge exists in various forms, there are citywide plans, needs assessments, quality of life plans developed for neighborhood revitalization, it's reports, white papers. And all of this, I understand it or is understood as representations of locally contextualized knowledge. And the language and discourse of community change can be heard in coalitions, initiatives and events, right? Like so, we could collect or capture all of the, the printed forms of local knowledge, but we also could begin to hear um how people are talking about things, like we come to board meetings and hear how people are talking about issues in our local community. Um, so a sonic way of knowing is which, what I chose to sort of understand this, and it's why I chose that is because observation or site economics and big data tends to be overrepresented ways of knowing. And a sonic way of knowing, as well as sonic information and communication technologies, offer a way to explore different ways of knowing and learning about complex local global issues. So before I begin, um, I want to ask that we take an extra pause to listen. I want you to listen to my voice as it fades. Listen to the sounds of the environment. If you have some paper or pen in front of you, just jot down or just take notes of the sounds that you hear. We are beginning to see alignment. Youth are creating media. Youth are creating media without us. Youth are creating media in high poverty neighborhoods where we have a problem with sustaining engagement with low income residents who are not informing our process. At risk, underperforming youth are creating media, starting and running businesses without us. A local volunteer resident participant repeated insistently in a meeting where we were discussing the results of the analysis with consultants. A market analysis, analysis commission to you know, speak the language of funders to attract much needed investments. The fact is, doing a market analysis was an action item suggested by the committee consisting of volunteer residents working on economic development, brought to the executive leadership team for discussion and voted on by residents approved in the minutes. You remember the dots, we each got three if memory serves me. Regardless, everyone is, was asked to select actions from a list with only one requirement, that whatever is selected could be funded and completed in a specific time allotted. There's a really good picture in the report we sent to funders and in the loose letter to residents, it's a great picture of resident participation alongside an announcement celebrating we've celebrating, celebrating being invited to submit an application for additional funding, did you see it? Anyway, the funders loved it, we're beginning to see alignment. We submitted another proposal to fund our backbone agency in developing a strategy to increase its capacity to replicate our neighborhood revitalization process alongside two other neighborhood associations. The volunteer resident participant replied, the only three dots alongside youth-created media, those were mine. Are you listening? We're beginning to see alignment. Residents are beginning to understand what this is, an innovation that puts youth in the center of a process that wraps services around them. Turning conversations into actions and community collaborations is hard work and literally takes time. Youth create media that raises awareness of neighborhood conditions and their experiences. They're creating media without us, okay, if a grant opportunity becomes available, but there have been significant shifts in punt funding, mental health, workforce development and shared data are funding priorities now. There's no funding for youth-created media, and besides, it's described as an asset in our quality of life planning document we conducted with residents. We did a bunch of sessions, a solid process. The problem is, funders are disconnected from the live realities. Funders are disconnected from the live realities of residents and nonprofits require sustainable funding. We have to accept that it's an ugly reality of society. Much-needed investments unfortunately do not invest in neighborhoods innovations, youth actively collaborating, created media, it's not a vetted practice with measurable outcomes, it doesn't speak the language, and there's no time for translations. We're executing neighborhood revitalization, wrapped in evaluation frameworks that measure our progress towards economic development, a process that requires sustainable funding to replicate alongside other neighborhood associations. We're beginning to see alignment. Those who can make funding decisions are beginning to see what neighbor, neighborhood revitalization is. Youth are collaborating, starting businesses, creating media that raise awareness of neighborhood conditions and their experiences. In creative space, youth are creating media. It attracted our attention, we invited them to meetings, encouraged them to participate, and all I reiterate is youth create media, youth create media. I wanted to understand what that meant, but their engagement is so infrequent, it's a shame, unfortunately, really, hey, 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 did you hear? They decided to invest in a very nice century here, magnificent edifice that demarcates the boundary of place. Residents? That's the same new street, new market on Main, not enough, but much better than it has been. These massive city investments and infrastructure improvements initiating in transformational ideas, no, 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 no. Residents, no, no, they don't understand how that relates to them, no. Youth are creating media in high poverty neighborhoods where there's a problem with sustaining engagement with residents who are not informing the process. Youth are creating media, starting and running businesses without investments, investments that replicate best practices in demarcated locations that fund and the growth of nonprofit organizations that require sustainable funding to implement and manage processes. Youth are creating in creative spaces that they created. We've brought in millions in investments. We've invested in spaces and hired new positions, grew nonprofit organizations, communication is a challenge, but engagement is consistent. Youth are creating media without us. Hey, you remember that funding we're invited to apply for again, to replicate our neighborhood revitalization framework alongside those other neighborhood associations? I did a presentation, showed the video of youth visiting, visioning, you know, you know, once creating media, I shared the data. We're beginning to see alignment. So that was a, a vignette, it's an abridge of vignette, it's um, it's a version sort of of a vignette, a composite narrative used to communicate key information from information that, from the data I collected in my research. Um, it's sort of the full version would be in a published form of that, that research, so vignettes are not real life, again, so I collected, I had a lot of, did about sixteen interviews, I collected a lot of documents, um, my own, some of my own experiences, but that sort of formed um, that sort of story, if you will, of how spaces are created, right? In, in around sort of this idea of a promise zone designation, right? So I hope that you can sense the tension and hear the contradiction, contradictions across three distinct but overlapping spaces that I call sort of official space, network space and creative space, so you, you heard that youth are creating media. And so that's sort of this idea of creative space, then you have an official narrative of what the promise zone is, what neighborhood revitalization is, and we call that sort of um, of official space. And then like some questions that don't get kind of answered in, in, in official space, some networks are created. Um, so where they can discuss some issues, so, so it kind of sort of constitutes a, a network space. So what does this have, what does this mean for libraries? So this vignette provides an example of an auditory modality that has implications for public libraries and collaborative community learning and change. So the implication particularly for libraries is capturing how and what we know about complex local, local global issues that affect our community and community, so our community broader, and then we could sort of begin to sort of look at in different spaces, how it affects those, those different organizations of people. And in a sonic approach, listens to the community to learn about the local realities and the experiences of, of these complex global issues and collects that information and sort of gives it back to the community, so in this way or through programming, right? So one, we will collect all of the information. Now, local information is a little harder to collect than it is sort of books that we ca- capture in our normal collections, right? Local history is, we've kind of got that figured out a little bit, but how do we collect local knowledge that I discussed, how those plans, all those plans, these meetings, these, these questions that come up? So that is a challenge for local libraries to collect that, but then once we collect it, how do we turn that information back around and give it back to the community? So I'm arguing or, or at least sort of theorizing a way to do that in this sort of auditory or performative way. And what I hope to sort of get out of that across these different spaces, and so what I hope to get out of that really is not to really push any buttons, maybe, but um, to, to just encourage more dialogue, right? Encourage more participation, get more people to understand and learn about how these global issues, education reform, poverty um, affects us in our local community, right? And so the library basically sort of can be a conduit, right? We don't have to do everything, but we can sort of, I think it's our job to collect local knowledge, we collect the community's knowledge in the form of collections, we do cert, we create services and we also do programs. So I think we can bring, put this information back out and then we go back out again, it's sort of a spiraling sort of process that we go back out now, and then so we can ask like, what did you hear? What did you hear? What did you learn? So we don't have time to really unpack that. This, this particular vignette talked about economic development um and neighborhood revitalization, but it could be, be anything. So this idea of youth creating media and this alignment, that's very literal, but it also is just figurative, right? Youth are creating media, they, they are, right? And they're doing it by themselves, right? Many creative spaces that, that exist right now, I discovered a, a couple and I could probably go out and discover more. But, but sort of in a figurative way, we could plug in any kind of tensions, if you will, in terms of different sides of a particular argument or different ways people understand or experiencing issues locally, right? So then we put that together, we can have dialogue and the hope is to have dialogue. In this vignette, we're seeing talking happen, but we're not seeing dialogue. So that essentially, right, is what I have in a, in a short period of time, have been able to sort of demonstrate is happening. So I'm gonna just sort of close uh by reading something. Yeah. Just this, this language is, would go to waste if I don't read it. Uh, so if we, so if we take the, they, take the extra pause to listen, we may learn something about the collective knowledge locally. So how we know and act on local global issues. Collective community knowledge reverberates and languages into oblivion, like the sounds of the bell in the Buddhist tradition that lingers and fades away. Local global knowledge spirals and reverberates, a mix of imagination, a vision and action that constitutes place, space and identity. So collaborations produce a tense and anxious sensation which can be described as the relationship between the stability of persistence of systems and the can creative dissonance within restricted spaces. So um, like these coalitions, right, these temporary bodies are, are formed and in those, a lot of information is sort of um, discovered, learned locally. And there's also tension in those spaces, right? And I, I think the library can collect that information and collect those questions and then sort of give it back to uh the community. And then go back through that process again, and hopefully we will begin to see shifts in narrative, we'll begin to see different actions, maybe better actions, hopefully uh more equitable actions, uh more collaborative actions, more participation and more people involved in decision-making. Thank you. Um, and I'll, if you have any questions, I'll entertain any questions.
I will say this, first of all, for a moment, I was gonna stop you and say the additions for Hamilton are down. Cause I thought you were gonna do a dialogue from there, but then second, I was gonna, I mean, this is why I'm still mad at you. Or E, EBPL, but uh, I could not agree with you more. How many of our problems, of society's problems, come from talking but not having dialogue? So these are all important things, and this is uh our true democratic institutions, public schools, public libraries. It's true public, it's true democratic, and it should be the place that fosters just what you're saying. Thanks, Charles, thank you.
Alright, thank you, I appreciate the time, thank you.
Eric, this is Sabrina.
Yes, Sabrina.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to tell uh Mr. Sutton, first of all, it's really nice to see him, it was very um, uh, I was very moved by your presentation. It's needed so badly and I just appreciate the work that you have put into it, it was phenomenal, so just wanted to give you a um, a shout out to say it was fantastic, super fantastic.
Thank you, Sabrina. You got a super fantastic.
Yeah.
I strive for a super fantastic. Alright, thank you, thank you, Sabrina. Um, announcements.
Uh, just a quick one, um, but I'd like to thank Charles for all his hard work on this project when he was here and certainly as he left, just did become a professor at I U P U I, we do miss him around here um immensely, I still look for him down the hall sometimes, but I really do appreciate all of his work that he's continued even after he um left us here at EBPL. But my announcement, I just want to remind the board again that uh our second speak um author is tonight, Robin Wall Timmerer. And the reception is directly after this meeting here at five thirty, and uh her book, Bringing Sweetgrass, um, she is a it's Bringing Sweetgrass, indigenous wisdom, scientific knowledge and the teaching of plants, she's the director of the Center of Native Peoples and the Environment, and I believe it's located in upstate New York, if I remember correctly. Um, she's a member of the Potawatomi tribe, very interesting, very um renowned author um in this field, so uh we're glad to have her here. It should be a very interesting evening.
Excellent, great.
I have one additional announcement, it's just a heads up really, that tomorrow morning, somewhere around the time about eight in the morning, you will get an email. It will be your strategic planning survey, so we have started that process with the public, we have started that process internally with the staff and the EBPL board has their own survey, as does the EBPL founding, foundation board, and I'll be sending those out to you tomorrow, so please look for it and fill it out. So then you can form our next strategic plan.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, good to see you, Charles. I will adjourn the meeting at five eighteen.